Good afternoon, everyone. We apologize for our tardiness today. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors, August 27th, 22nd, 2018 is now called to order. The secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Manzer?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Here.
Ms. Lewis? Mr. Oats?
Here.
Mr. Fiero?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Morris? Dr. Hartsfield?
Ms. Robinson?
Here. Board members Natalie Lewis and Board Member Carl Evans have requested an excused absence this evening. If there's no objection, we would like to excuse their absence. Their absence is excused. We do have, if there's no objection, we would like to approve the agenda. If not, the agenda is approved. We do have four individuals that are wishing to address the board this evening. The public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair recognizes Susan Stocking with our District Advisory Committee. Welcome, Ms. Stocking. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Baddell, Chairwoman Robinson, and members of the board. The District Advisory Committee Executive Board met in July to discuss our priorities for the upcoming school year and to create programming designed to develop effective KCPS parent advocates. Research has shown that when parents get involved in their child's education, there are many benefits, including better attendance, improved social skills, higher grades, and a more positive attitude towards school. Improved behavior or better relationship with teachers and administrators can also lead to higher graduation rates. Our goal is to help develop effective parent and community advocates that can work together to create positive change in our district. During Summer Fest, we had the chance to connect with every school in the district and provide information about DAC and upcoming meeting dates. Our first general meeting will be 5:30 on Wednesday, September 19th, here at the Board of Education, and we'd love to have representation from every school. We will have information about the Urban League's Parent Empowerment Program and KC Public Schools Student in Transition Program. Junior Achievement will be speaking about financial literacy and how to bring their programming into our schools. And the Missouri PTA will explain the benefits of starting a PTA as well as provide starter kits and support from existing KCPS PTA leaders. We've been in contact about getting PTA starter kits electronically in multiple languages. Also on the agenda is sharing information about events and projects going on within the district so we can support each other and cross-promote our schools. Our second meeting on December 5th will be focused on legislative priorities, equity, and policy issues impacting the district. In January, our focus will be on giving back and ways to be of service to the district. Our district has people with tremendous capacities, abilities, and gifts, and if we can unlock those assets, I believe we can unlock power and foster connections which give our stakeholders a greater sense of ownership in the district. We will have a final meeting in May for our annual elections and other business that our DAC participants are interested in. We're looking forward to a productive year of partnering with the district, parents, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Irving Graham with South Round Top Neighborhood Association. Welcome, Mr. Graham. And as you come, and before we start our time, I would like to publicly apologize for our last meeting when we had our public engagement period in which, on my end, there was some miscommunication in not reading your statement. So I apologize for that, and we look forward to your three minutes today. It begins now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And greetings to the, greetings from the South Round Top Neighborhood Association, where I, Irving Graham, am the president. Last month, as mentioned, the board did vote to demolish the Greenwood Elementary School located at 3711 East 27th Street. I was unable to speak at that time, but tonight I would like to update you with the significant development and to request that you reconsider and reverse your decision to demolish this important landmark in our neighborhood. Last Tuesday, on August 14, 2018, the Kansas City Missouri Home Stating Authority voted to accept the donation of the vacant Greenwood School Building from the school district. We humbly request that you reconsider your demolition decision made last month and move to allow your staff the power to work with the Home Stating Authority in order to develop an agreement to transfer the Greenwood Building. This proposal saves the school board money, and it also, at the same time, increases the community goodwill to move forward with the project of a catalytic magnitude restoring our neighborhood. Through the leadership of Ted Anderson, John Wood, and other important city representatives, we now present this board an alternative development scenario that would allow the board to release the property to the third party, the Home Stating Authority, with the power to manage the building and prepare the environmental remediation and reuse. Greenwood is our neighborhood's last surviving historical site in our neighborhood. And although the past few months have presented a challenge, we still desire the opportunity to rebuild a positive relationship with the school board. And our neighborhood requests the opportunity to restore the former Greenwood School Building with the help of the Kansas City Home Stating Authority. And please authorize your repurposing staff to work with Ted Anderson, John Wood, and other city staff to begin the process of transferring the building to the Home Stating Authority so that we can begin the environmental remediation and work toward historic preservation. South Round Top needs a beacon of hope, not another vacant land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Monica Smith to discuss parent involvement. Take your time.
I have a knee injury, excuse me. Good evening, everybody. I want to start with parent involvement and how important it is for our young people, our community, and the school district. I've been involved since my children were in kindergarten, K through 12, all walked them, all through the process. And it's a shame how things continue to be the same, but a change is coming. Dr. Baddell, we have been without accreditation since 2003. You have brought us partially there. All we need is that other hump. Really, I commend you for working as hard as you have and to giving us, giving us an opportunity to rise above. Now, with all due respect, I'm trying to find the right words, y'all know I don't have the three minutes, but I'm glad that you backed out the deal with the mayor, with all due respect. But a school bond has not passed in this city for 40 years, and we've been without accreditation. But you seem to have got us there, halfway there. That's good, better than nothing at all. So I want to continue to support that. I want to continue to get with our parents. I want to continue to look at where we're going later. Now, on Saturday, this coming Saturday, Leon Stapleton of Leon's Thriftway United Supers off of 39th and Spruce, across from Seven Oaks Shopping, I mean, Seven Oaks Park, we're dedicating him for his service, and we're giving him a street, the community. So if anybody's available to be there from 10 to 2, I think it is, please come. You don't have to speak, you don't have to speak or nothing like that. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but our children need to see you. Our children need to know what greatness is and what greatness could be with hard work. And our parents need to see that, too. And I'm just grateful. I've been out of commission for a little while, lived in another state for about seven years. I'm back here now, and I have been with this district forever, and I'm back. So I'm looking to, you know, knock, kick doors open and knock them down and support what you're trying to do for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next on our agenda is Tom Love to discuss reading grants. Welcome, Mr. Love. You have three minutes.
I've got a copy of these grant paper. I'm hoping we can utilize that grant, potential grant money from the state to combine it with some of the other reading programs that's funded by the state. We have this Senate Bill 319 law that this last summer, of course, there were supposed to be potentially one-third of all the fifth and sixth graders, as well as some of these fourth graders, were supposed to receive tutoring, 40 hours of tutoring. And I think I know a way that we might be able to make that right by having after-school tutoring set up Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for 40 minutes. Then, over a year period, where they can get the total of 70 hours that they're required to receive under state law. And then the K through third grade students, there's money from the state as well for any of them that are reading below grade level. Now, this Senate Bill 319, they have to be two years or more behind. That involves a third of all the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. And they haven't received what they were entitled to, and it's really important to their lives and the life of Kansas City to make sure that happens. I checked in Texas prisons, a university study there, and they said 49% of the inmates had dyslexia. That's, you know, we have a dyslexia law that took place, you know, when school started this year, and all these students, and it's probably 15 to 20%, are supposed to be tested if they're struggling in reading and then provided help. Now, the parents, as we're, people are talking about tonight, have not been surveyed. The ones that go to the Title I meeting, I've been to them. I went to one, there was only one parent there in an elementary school. I went to another one, an aunt was there. That was it. And the end of the year, supposed to make the decision, no, all the parents that have children that are failing in reading are supposed to have something to say so, and I guarantee you, they're going to want reading help with their Title I funds. Those instructional coaches can go into the classroom and be great teachers, but we have to have the literacy labs in order for the students to have an opportunity to succeed in school. Their lives should not be messed up by the time they're nine years old. They need to have the help that's required by the state, and we need to comply with these laws. We need to utilize the funds that the federal government's given us, $9.4 million, I think maybe it's going to increase this year. We hired, what, four reading specialists for 22 Title I schools. Oletha, the students there in third grade with the same demographics, except for the little melanocyte cells, they had 90% at-risk and 30% English second language learners, they got 80% reading on grade level at third grade. And normally, for ESL students, that takes to fourth or fifth grade.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
Thank you.
Do we have any ad hoc committees that wish to report this evening? Yes, Board Member Wolfsey.
Thank you, Chairwoman Robinson. I'm here with our little reminder that next month we'll be having our off-site board meeting on September the 12th at Foxen Elementary, and we would love to see this big group of people show up at that one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. A presentation by John Barjé and Associates. For this presentation, the chair recognizes Superintendent Dr. Baddell and also Board Member Fiero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Barjé and Associates, we're extremely happy to have you here today. I know that you all have been on and off with the school district over the past 10 to 15 years, and for the community, this is our group that conducts the lobbying for us in Jefferson City. We wanted them to come in and provide an update to the community and to the board, and so I did want to pass it over to Mr. Fiero because he chairs our Government Relations Committee, and then we'll bring you up.
Thank you, Dr. Baddell. You know, I'll just add, and ma'am, I forgive me, I forgot your name, you right there in the purple. What was your name again? Ms. Smith. Mrs. Smith said something that I think is very appropriate here, and that is, you know, we're turning a corner here with the district. And I can recall when we first started working with John Barjé and Associates and here today, Chris Ropie's with them, what we had heard was that, well, we've worked with Mr. Barjé in the past when the district has always needed someone to represent them in terms of correcting a right, and we were playing, I think, defense all the time. And so the last two years have been totally different. With John and Chris's work, and John's daughter also is a part of the firm, they have created an environment in Jefferson City that when myself, Patty Manzer, and Jennifer Wolfsey, who are part of the Government Relations Committee in particular, have gone up there, the doors are wide open. The conversations are being had. There's a willingness to listen. There's a willingness to negotiate, and I know Dr. Baddell has experienced the same thing. And so that, I think, is an example of the work that John Barjé and Associates is doing to help us represent the children and families of this district. Also, part of their work is helping us with relationship building. I know as the next general session starts in January, we have a large number of incoming state reps as well as new state senators. So certainly, there's that need for our committee, our district, our superintendent, to establish new relationships, to continue working towards the betterment of public education. So I just wanted to point that out, and certainly, John and Chris to the podium, but I did want to say that they have been extremely helpful and beneficial to what we have tried to accomplish. In particular, we, last year, asked for their help to modify a bill that focused on redistricting, and we needed the terms to be staggered, and through their help and leadership, that was achieved. And this year, they even make transportation funding. So I can go on and on, but I just wanted to point out to you that they have been very beneficial to us fulfilling the mission of this district. So John, I'll invite you and Chris to come up and say a few words.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm John Barjé, and my associate, Chris Ropie, is here with us this evening, and Chris is going to address you in just a moment. Thank you very much for the kind comments. It is indeed a privilege and an honor for my firm to be representing the Kansas City Public School Districts in Jefferson City. We have had, we've learned a lot about the district. I've seen a lot of changes, as Dr. Baddell and Mr. Fiero spoke of, since my first encounter representing the district over a decade ago. And I can tell you, I'm very proud to carry the message of what you all are doing and the staff are doing, and the hard work that the parents, the faculty, and our great students are doing. And when we talk to legislators in Jefferson City about it, you see a great deal of pride, particularly with those from the Kansas City area, to see that the corner is being turned, to steal a phrase from Mrs. Smith. You know, things are going in the right direction. People are excited about it. I will tell you that in our firm, we have six lobbyists that work in Jefferson City every day. The legislature is in session on your behalf. We interact with the Kansas City delegation first, make sure that they who represent you all know exactly what's going on in a timely manner, and then we spread the word throughout the chamber so that all of those individuals in the House and the Senate, 197 total, that deliberate issues of importance to our state every year, that all of them know what's going on in Kansas City and that things are greatly improved. We coordinate and communicate on a very regular basis with Dr. Baddell, his fine staff, many of which are here today that we've had the privilege of working with, Mr. Fiero and the Legislative Committee. It's been a great delight to work with them. I can't tell you, I'm very privileged to represent a lot of organizations. And to Dr. Baddell, Mr. Fiero, and you all, I really commend your staff. The information turnaround time and the communication is second to none of organizations that we represent. And that gives us, when we think about the short time that the legislature is in session, and we all know state representatives and state senators, when they would like to have an answer to something, two minutes was too long. So it's very important, and I thank all of you for the hard work that you do. You know, just a couple of items, and I'd like to ask Mr. Ropie to kind of talk just for a moment or two about some specific things we worked on. But in general, you know, we're, we've had some difficult times in our state in the last seven or eight months, and hopefully, that's all behind us now, and people in Jefferson City can continue to work together in bipartisan nature for the betterment of our state, and in this case, for the betterment of the students we're trying to educate in our K through 12 systems. Just as some information, last year, over 2,200 pieces of legislation were introduced for consideration by the General Assembly. That's a lot of, I'm telling you, there's probably over 300 dealing with K through 12 education. And out of that, about 148 bills actually get passed, and a lot of them are combined. We worked on a lot of issues on your behalf. You have a tremendous delegation here in Kansas City, headed up by Senator Kiki Kearls, soon-to-be former Representative Gail McCann-Beatty, a great help, as well as all the members of the Kansas City delegation. I can't recall an incident where one of the board members or staff were down there, which were numerous times that you traveled to Jefferson City, that the members of the Kansas City Legislative Delegation weren't excited and warmly received you and wanted to learn and hear how they could help and what was the most recent information about the great work you were doing educating the young people in Kansas City. The legislature, as Dr. Baddell pointed out, will be reconvening in January. The pre-filing of bills begins again in December 1st. And out of that 197 members, 34 senators and 163 House members, this session is at term limits, remember? We have term limits in our state, so people are asked to go home after eight years or move to another chamber. So there's going to be, out of 163 House members, at least 55 new House members. There will be one-third of Missouri's 34 senators will be new senators. And you know, that's a lot of people, when you think about it, that are coming to make major decisions about, in this case, our educational process, that haven't sat where you sit now and haven't been on the administrative staff. And so there's a great educational curve, and we are on that. Many of the board members and staff joined us yesterday in trying to reach out to some of the Kansas City delegation, engage in some social discussions about what's going to happen, the good news we have here, and I think we'll continue to do that with our existing legislators and our incoming legislators in an effort to spread the word. We're honored and privileged to represent you all. Thank you for what you're doing. You don't get thanked a lot, but you should be. And I'd like to ask Mr. Ropie to just talk for a moment about a couple of the issues that we talked about, and if anybody has questions, we'll be happy to take them. Chris?
Thanks, John. And like I said, any questions that you have, feel free to chime in and we'll get them answered for you. Beyond what I would call some of the bigger statewide-type education issues last year that mostly were viewed, and thanks to staff, you know, gave us the right talking points to go around and communicate, and like John said, first, we go to the local delegation here, make sure they understand where the district's at. They have always been supportive and even, you know, much more so with the leadership that you've all provided. A couple of those bills that we did deal with this year, and thankfully, we're successful in stopping. You looked at what is called early, or excuse me, education savings accounts, which I, you know, I think a lot of people can see that as a slippery slope or just flat-out vouchers and seeing dollars very much needed to go to our public education institutions being taken away over into the private side of things and to the detriment of the kids trying to be educated. It was a, you know, a bill that got a lot of time spent on the Senate floor, but thankfully, with the help of Senator Kearls and her leadership and several other senators who thought that was a very bad idea, we were able to stop that, and it was a process that we had to watch pretty closely throughout the entire session because it came up so early, but we were able to work to defeat that bad piece of legislation in the Missouri House. They spent a lot of time talking about charter expansion, and I think there's a push, if you will, and a better understanding from key people saying, okay, we need to slow down maybe and figure out how what we currently have is working before we try to go and expand. So I think that message is working and is being well-received, and obviously, you have great support from your local delegation in support of that effort. Those are kind of the two really bad ones that were out there this year that we were able successfully work on and stop. Of course, what started out as a local issue on the innovative schools idea and how buildings are used, et cetera, you saw a piece of legislation come flying out of the House at the last moment where, okay, we see it, such a great turnaround from your staff on explaining to us, we're not education experts, but we could then turn around and talk to legislators of why that was bad and work with the Senate Committee that that went in front of, and were able to slow that down with the help of several key senators to stop that from going further at that point. Something we'll see next year. You will see those issues next year. I mean, they're not going away. The makeup of the legislature is what it is and strongly, you know, with Republican majorities, but you've got a lot of support from some of your rural colleagues around the state that have a similar view, and we try to bring everybody together and work as a team across the state of folks that fall in line with our views on things. A couple of very specific issues that we were able to get done this year, just to bring to everybody's attention, is the transportation with municipal buses and that issue. We worked very well with Senator Kearls in the Senate and would not have got that done without her support. She was instrumental in that. Her relationships were, you know, on display with how well she got along with her colleagues and put it on, you know, five or six of her Republican senators' bills to get that through the Senate. And the same thing with Representative McCann-Beatty in the House, being minority floor leader's tremendous asset, to have her support to get that done, and we kind of just kept an eye on things, said, here's a great place to do that, and we're able to get that done. And then on the increase in link funding, working with, again, Senator Kearls, because she is thankfully on the Appropriations Committee and was on the Conference Committee for Budget that makes the final decisions on that, she fought for that and was able to get that in there and get that increased, which I know was very important and would have taken precious dollars away from programs you're already doing to move over there, but we're able to get that increased. Overall, the foundation formula was increased by $100 million from where it was the previous year. For this fiscal year, transportation increased by $10 million. It's not a lot of money, but at least it was something, but the legislature did make increases there. And I think with that, we can answer any questions or anything else in any of the specifics that either we didn't cover or we can elaborate, elaborate further.
Board Member Oats?
Hello. Nice to see you guys again. Quick, I guess, quick request. I serve as the board liaison to the DAC, the District Advisor Committee, and as she had mentioned in public comment today, they're going to be having their December meeting on December 5th around legislative priorities for the district and everything, and I just thought it'd be interesting to invite, if you guys had somebody available, that could come and speak with the parents. They're always interested in what they can do and how they can be great advocates for the district as well, so.
Thank you for the invitation. December 5th, sir? We'll be there.
5:30 P.O.
December 6th, sir? December 5th at 5:30?
5:30, yeah. Here at the BOE, sir.
Absolutely.
Board Member Manzer?
So, you know, I've seen in the last few days that there's discussion about ongoing school transportation funding shortfalls, and it sounds like there may be some discussion. I don't know if it's through the administration, through that process, or if it will be legislative, but it looks like they're going to have to... but it looks like they're going to have to discuss potentially some budget adjustments. And I don't know if you're hearing anything about that. And can you advise us as the board, is that decided through administration process, or is that something that legislators will have to take up? I know school transportation is a significant part of our budget because we have an obligation to provide transportation to our families. They expect it, and it's school safety, and it's a commitment we've made. So any insights on?
Well, thanks for bringing it up. I know that Governor Parsons' administration is looking into this currently. And so the process is that they are talking with Desi to see what discretionary funds may be available, that they can shift within specifically earmarked categories, excuse me, I didn't mean to step away from the microphone. So the department does not have the flexibility to take dollars that were earmarked for a totally different program and bring them into transportation. That they would need legislative authority for. But I do know from talking with one of Governor Parsons' assistants, aides, that they're in discussions with Desi as to what they might be able to do short-term before the legislature comes back. And I will try to find out some more from you. I think they're, as we speak, trying to figure out what to do, because it has popped up to be quite a problem. And I don't know, Chris, if you know more about?
Board Member Fiero?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to add a few more specifics. So as a committee, we meet twice a month, and I appreciate Matt bringing up the importance of DAC. And I know my colleague Jennifer Wolfsey has been working to facilitate having a DAC member on the committee, so we certainly look forward to that. And during the legislative session between January and May, we're on the phone with John Barge and Chris monthly. So we are always on top of what's going on in Jefferson City. And then when there's certainly a bigger issue, they usually contact Dr. Bedell and Madam Chair Robinson, who herself has gone to Jefferson City on a number of occasions and works very well behind the scenes locally, and then hands that off to us, so we appreciate that. So just wanted to kind of share some specifics. And then finally, we are working towards, by October of this year, to have our legislative priorities approved by this board so that then we can position ourselves to have our annual legislative breakfast, which will be sometime in December, with our local delegation. So I think the group, again, Patty Manzer, Jennifer, and Asia Morris, and Andrea Flinders is a part of that group as well, have really worked well to keep us ahead of the game. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much for your presentation and coming down and sharing with us.
Thank you.
All right. The next item of business is the superintendent's report, item 2.05. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To our community, we will have three very important presents. Will be a video highlight, schools. We will then move to a strategic plan update, and then we will give you all an enrollment recruitment update. So we want to go ahead and start with the video highlight regarding our start of schools. It's been a very smooth start to this school year, to say the least, and it's pretty evident around the community that we're off to a really good start. So we want to continue that momentum, but we want to highlight that right now.
Kansas City Public Schools successfully launched the 2018-2019 academic year as we went all-in for our students and families. The new year started strong at convocation, which was held on Thursday, August 9th, at Kansas City Music Hall. More than 2,000 KCPS employees gathered for an afternoon of inspiration and vision leading into the start of classes. Kid Superintendent got the cabinet fired up to be all-in. Team KCPS was brought to its feet with a rousing address by Congressman Emanuel Cleaver. Every school shared a word on a placard that represented how staff are all-in for students. The KCPS Education Foundation awarded special grants to Benjamin Banneker Elementary School, Lincoln College Preparatory Academy, and African-Centered College Preparatory Academy Lower Campus. Deputy Superintendent Marla Shepherd and KCPS 2018 Teacher of the Year Arjun Ravindran talked about how administrators and teachers need to work together to meet the needs of students. And Superintendent Mark Bedell spoke about the elements of all-in: community, urgency, excitement, risk-taking, and equity. It was a phenomenal and energizing event for Team KCPS. Classes for the 2018-2019 academic year started Monday morning, August 13th. By all accounts, it was the best school start for KCPS in recent memory. 11,765 students attended on the first day. That was 1,017 more students in class compared to the first day in 2017. Buses were running well, campuses were in great condition, and across KCPS, staff, alumni, vendors, partners, and volunteers were welcoming students with enthusiasm and special activities. High-quality teaching and learning was happening from day one in our classrooms. It was a great launch for KCPS. We are all-in for our kids.
I would also, I would definitely encourage all of you to come out and support our students in the extracurricular world. I had an opportunity to go to the volleyball jamboree earlier this week. We have schools that have not been able to field a JV freshman team and a varsity team in volleyball. We have students coming out. We have football teams now compared to two years ago where we have, right now, we're having to figure out, we gotta get some more helmets and some pads. I know, I'm looking at athletic director back there, but we have that many students coming out, participating in fall sports. Cross-country numbers are up. I just want you to know, our kids feel like there's a sense of belonging, and that's because of the start that I believe we've had and just what we're trying to build over the past couple of years around this sense of community and belonging. And so come out and support them. Football games start this weekend. I mean, there's a game on Saturday at 9 o'clock at Central. Come out and support these kids. Cross-country meets, all of those good things, volleyball competition. They need to see you all out there supporting them. That will get even more of our kids involved and keep them in proactive activities. I do want the community to know that we are expecting a tremendous amount of our data on this. And what we plan to apprehensive where we are as a result of implementation of our strategic plan, and that will take place in January, I believe, the second board meeting in January, if I'm not mistaken. So this is just an overview of where we are so we can make sure that we're keeping our finger on the pulse of what's happening with the strategic plan implementation. So Jesse, it's yours.
Good evening. It's already been a year since the Board of Directors approved the KCPS strategic plan. Kind of hard to believe, a year goes by fast. A lot's happened in KCPS in regards to this plan, so we wanted to give an update to the Board of Directors tonight. You know, it's interesting, I was thinking about this when we were developing the plan in early 2017, we had a lot of folks that came out to support us, teachers, we had community people, some board members participated as well. And one thing that I heard over and over again is, we want to support the district, we want to support the superintendent, we got to follow through. So they really wanted something more than just a plan that sits on a shelf. That was important to a lot of people. So this update is to show the community that we are following through with things that we promised in our strategic plan. And that's really the point of having an update. We want to keep the board aware of what's going on, also want to keep those people in our community, be proactive in our communication with them, and have this accountability mechanism in place so they can see what's happening. And also, we got to keep in mind those goals that we have for kids. We got to keep that momentum and support going for those. So we want to keep those in the forefront of everybody's mind. When we look what our annual calendar for updates will be, we just wanted to go ahead and share this with the board right away. A little while ago, we got together with Mr. Oats to develop a calendar for when things would be reported to the board, and one component of that is the strategic plan. So we have, what we're having tonight, our end-of-the-year update, so things that happened in school year 1718. We have an updated scorecard to share with you based upon some of the numbers we have back. It's an assessment on the progress that was made on some key actions last school year. Like Dr. Bedell mentioned, we'll be back in January for a mid-year update. That's where we'll talk about things that have happened thus far within the 1819 school year. But in a lot of ways, that report will almost be a little more robust because we're going to have the achievement data back based upon state assessment. In an ideal world, that would be a part of the end-of-the-year report, but due to the calendar of when we get that data back from the state of Missouri, it has to be in January. So that's what we're looking for. In the middle there, there's a date in September-October. Right now, we're looking for October, where we want to re-engage all the folks that helped us to build this plan so they can be updated on exactly what's happening and to weigh in on some of the initiatives that the district is doing moving forward. So they can feel like they still have a stake in it and didn't just compete or participate in a few meetings last year. Just a quick reminder of some of the basic components of the strategic plan, I know the board is fully aware, but in case there's some community members that haven't seen this for a little while. The way our plan is structured is we started with our goals and measures for student success. So we really started out with saying, where do we want kids to be in KCPS? So the first goal is related to success in the early years, PK to grade three, making sure they're on track by the end of third grade. We know based upon research, if they have success in those early years, that's a big indicator of how well they'll do as they progress in their schooling. So it's really important to get them early. The fifth goal is when they leave KCPS, are they going to be ready for life? College, career, and life. Do they have that college and career plan? Are they ready to execute that plan after they get that diploma from KCPS? And goals two, three, and four are things we want to do while they're with us, supporting the whole child, making sure they're challenged, they're making growth, and then also 21st-century critical thinkers and problem solvers, because we know that's going to be important for them as they grow up. So that's what we want for students. The rest of the plan is all about what adults are going to be doing to supporting them. So these are our four pillars, and all of our adult practices are based around these four pillars. First one's about teaching and learning. Pillar B is about the families and communities coming together, so we recognize that schools can't do it alone. There's more to this puzzle than just KCPS. Our pillar C is investing in people, making sure we have the right people, but also we train our people and have that pipeline within our own organization. And then pillar D is managing the whole, making sure that we have everything running efficiently, and when we need to make important decisions, that they are data-informed. So based upon those pillars, as you can see in this diagram, we have our 12 strategic priorities that were identified when we did this plan. So you can see there, the 12 priorities go around our pillars. Each one is aligned with three. So in pillar A, we have student-centered caring relationships, aligned instructional system, personalization, and successful transitions. So then those priorities then correspond to the different pillars all the way around. To help us keep track of all these, we have assigned cabinet members to be in charge of each strategic priority. So just so you can be aware, we do have folks who are making sure these things get done. That doesn't mean that they are all on their own, that they are completing all these things, but they are making sure that adults within KCPS are doing these things. And then, of course, we have Dr. Bedell, which we will throw in the middle because he is overseeing our entire plan. In addition to our 12 priorities that go around the outside, each priority has corresponding key actions, which are things that we know that we need to do. So this is just a page from the plan. As a reminder, we have our pillar at the top, our priority, and then, for example, for this strategic priority, there are four key actions that we need to do. So you look at our plan in its entirety, we have, I believe, 64 key actions, which that's a lot. But these are all things that we feel are important. But it's kind of like the old adage, you know, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So we're not tackling all 64 key actions. This is a five-year plan, and that's very intentional. So the process that we've set up is, at the beginning of each school year, the superintendent, Dr. Bedell, along with his cabinet, identifies key actions that will take place for that school year, based upon data, based upon our scorecard, and things that we feel that we should accomplish that year to move the needle. So for example, in 2017-2018, for strategic priority number one, we chose 1.1. And so there was a real focus to ensure that that got done last school year and started. So it's not that those things are going away, but this is what we start at what time. So these are the key actions that were selected for last school year in 2017-2018. You can see a comprehensive list here from each priority. Some priorities have more than one, but it just helps us to keep track of what we want to accomplish as a system. There's a lot of these key actions, but we have a mechanism to help us keep track, and that's a tool we'd like to share with you, is our Eye on the Goal, which is an online tracking process that we've been using internally entire last school year. So if you see here, that KCPS number three, that aligns to the third strategic priority, 3.1 is our key action, and then every little thing there to the right, it's kind of grayed out, it's hard to see. The reason it's grayed out is because they've already been accomplished, so that's good news, I guess. But those are the milestones. So in order to make that key action happen, what do we need to do? Then to the right there, those little boxes that are different colors are check-in points. So throughout the year, those have dates on them. Then we have to check in and say we are on progress, a little bit of progress has been made, or no progress has been made. So they can either be green, yellow, or red. As you can see, this is the end of the year, so most of these things have been completed, which is nice to see. This online tracking tool also lets us see the system as a whole. We can see what's been completed, what we've made minimum progress on, as well as each project kind of stacked up against each other. One other tool we don't have a screenshot of, though, is we have the ability to rank our cabinet members and their check-ins, so it's kind of nice for a nice competitive aspect to see who can do their check-ins and where they rank within our system to make sure that things are getting done with the strategic plan. We just want to highlight a few different things from our report that we provided. So we provided a comprehensive report to board members, which is in your packet. It is quite lengthy, so we don't have a lot of copies for the public, but it is online right now, if people would like to download it. It's at kcpublicschools.org/strategicplan. There we have the scorecard, and you can download this document to look at electronically. This is just something that's happened with K-12 articulation, so that 2.1. You can see the format of the report is we wanted to list major accomplishments, issues and challenges, lessons learned, and then priorities for the next reporting cycle. So when we talk about the next reporting cycle, that's going to be August of 2018 to your next report in January of 2019. So basically, the first semester, before we come back to you, what do we want to accomplish by then? So last year, you can see some of the different things that we were going to do with this, aligning curriculum, assessments, instruction, instructional materials and technology, which was done. We introduced an instructional framework, the Instructional Core to Principals, as well as had this protocol for principals to analyze student data. Several issues and challenges. One thing, CIPD was having to do a lot. They were developing curriculum and assessments while also supporting teachers at the same time. We had 24 elementary schools sharing one ELA social studies coordinator, one math, and one science coordinator. So those were some things that made it difficult. But we have a lot of priorities for our next reporting cycle. We're going to have coordinators and coaches into networks. We're going to have monthly network meetings between CIPD and school leadership to make sure that we're providing the correct support. And we have a newly created app that allows us to identify the needs of teachers and address those needs. So as they go through, they can log things on their device or cellphone, so we can then have a log of what support's been given to different teachers and what support teachers need in the future. So something very exciting that we have for our school district. 5.3 was also one of our key actions we selected, homeschool dialogue, which we wanted to increase our communication with families, making sure that we were frequent and increasing the number of languages that we were able to provide communication in. Some things that we did in that key action, of course, we had the revitalization of the DAC, which was so nice to hear our public comment this evening of different activities that they have planned, as well as the internal parent engagement charter team to make sure that new initiatives are supported internally amongst KCPS staff, as well as the Family Empowerment Series, and then a lot of great events, which is pictured there, Summer Fest, which we all enjoy as a promotion of our school district. We had issues and challenges, of course, but also learned a lot. One thing to point out, when we're attempting new methods or introducing new initiatives or programs, we know we have to engage key stakeholders as part of an advisory committee to make sure we do that before we roll anything out. Also, conducting a historical assessment to see what's worked in the past before we jump into any initiatives for communication. Priorities for next reporting cycle, we want to hold Family Advocacy Workshop Series and develop an ongoing family communication method. So those are the things that are in the works for this school year. 10.1 is something that I'm very excited about, the results-focused annual plans for the district. We made a lot of good progress on that in our first year. So one thing that we have is, we ask our schools to always do school improvement plans, and so they have to go through this planning process, but we've never had internal departments go through a similar process. So last school year, we had department plans. So what we had departments do is after So what we had departments do is after Dr. Bedell and the cabinet identified what the key actions were, we asked departments, what are you going to do to support these key actions? So everybody had to see themselves within that plan. Then we went back to the departments and we said, okay, besides these key actions, what else are you doing that are other key actions, maybe that aren't priorities, but you're still going to do? So we put those into a department plan, as well as other big things that they wanted to accomplish. This helped us to touch more areas, not necessarily just those priorities, but different things that departments would identify. So we're going to keep that going next year. We have to refine that process a little bit. We have things that we can incorporate in to make that a little more robust. We have information now from our stakeholder survey about customer service in different departments. We're able to put that into our annual plans, as well as each of these plans was on the same tracking system that you saw those screenshots for, so those were also online for folks to track with their own department. And then 11.1, the needs-based resource allocation, basically ensuring that we are working towards equity within our district. We know we have schools that have a lot of needs, greater needs than others, and so we want to make sure that they have the resources that are appropriate to address those needs. So we implemented a tiered budget process for school buildings based entirely upon that tiered education model to make sure that we direct those resources to the buildings that need it. Had issues and challenges, I like that first bullet fancy way of saying we still need more money for things, I believe. Continue to need greater resources to address our needs. And then priorities for next reporting cycle, we're going to see that first one, how are these additions doing? So these supports that we're giving buildings, how is that helping to address some of these needs that we have? So that's going to start by the next reporting cycle. It probably won't be completed, obviously, because we want to see how the school year goes, but it's something that we definitely want to look at. So the world of strategic planning going forward, there's a lot of things kind of on the horizon. One of the things mentioned there is a scorecard redesign. I'll be one of the first to admit, right now, the scorecard is something, if you want to look at it, you'll look at it, but it's not that inviting maybe to the eye. There's a lot of information on there. So we've challenged our communications department to make it more of a design document, so parents will want to look at it and to see how we can be more graphic in displaying things. So that's something that we're looking forward to. We also will update the scorecard periodically as we get more information. So a few of the things on there, last year was the baseline year where we were figuring out how to measure it, and this year we are measuring it, but obviously, we're only two weeks into the school year. So hopefully, by the end of the first quarter, we'll have some of those things to be able to populate that scorecard, and so we can put that in an update to the board and on the website, and then you'll get another version in January when we come back with our next report. We have a stakeholder meeting coming up in October, which we look forward to engaging those folks again. I got to talk to a few of them at Summer Fest, and they were excited at the possibility of coming back to engage again, so it's really nice that they're still with KCPS. And then, of course, we'll be back in January for our mid-year progress report.
Are you ready for questions?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions? Yes, board member may answer.
So this is really helpful, and it's, I know, working in the nonprofit sector, and we do strategic planning, a lot of times, it feels like a root connect you probably have to do, but you sort of dread. But, you know, there's a lot of exciting work embedded in here, and I'm not sure, you know, just from, as we talk about it here, this, I know this was a lot of foundational work that was happening this year that was really critical. Dr. Bedell, I'd just love to hear you just in a one or two snapshot responses. What are some of the most exciting developments, you think, at this point in time that have come out of this strategic plan?
Well, one of them, I would say, is the instructional framework that we put in place for the school system, really being able to teach the instructional core to our administrators, the work that we did also with professional development, the comments that we received back from teachers about the value that they took from the development this summer. And then I will tell you, the other thing that we thought was very critical that we wanted to focus on was trying to make sure that we were able to accurately tier our schools so we can give them support. I would tell you, one of the biggest things that I've heard in all of the school visits I've gone, I've done so far this year is principals and teachers saying the fact that we were able to plan this summer in a way that we hadn't been able to plan in the past with the kind of support that was given to us has really gotten us off to a great start. The conversation around the district right now is there really aren't too many excuses anymore. I mean, you just can't say, we don't have this, we don't have that. We know what the plan is, so everybody feels excited about the alignment, and most importantly, that they feel supported as a result of this strategic plan and the buy-in that people are getting. So there's a tremendous amount that I can talk about. I would just say those are some of the things that I would definitely highlight that I think are going to give us a significant return when it's all said and done.
Board member may answer? I'm sorry, board member, we'll see.
Thank you. So on page 12, the key actions from 1718, remind me, you probably said it in the presentation, but I must have missed it. So is that, Dr. Bedell, do you identify those with cabinet? Okay. So now, where would we be able, will it be online, the ones for 1819?
It's a great question. So those are, so right now, we are, as you know, getting data in at a late time, but last year, we did this around the same time where we got together, September, early October. We conducted a retreat, and then we were able to come together and put the focus on those priorities. It's the same process we're going to do now. It's no different than our schools. We generally give them, well, across the country, they get their school improvement plans in by the end of October, I mean, by the end of September, early October, ready to roll. So we're going to be doing the same process that we took last year with them, but it is done in a retreat format, and so we already have that scheduled.
And can I just build on that? So ideally, we would get our information from the state at a much earlier level, but in the meantime, I look to Mr. Reynolds, do we get as much as we can through you and our data assessments? Okay.
Let me answer that. That's part of the reason why we have Eye Ready, and right now, schools are doing that. They're doing their achievement series and Eye Ready assessments right now. We also are, we talked to you all about a system-wide analysis that we've been working on, and our team will be briefed on where we are with that September 10th. We'll be able to use all of that data and the achievement series data and the Eye Ready data, all of that will be in, in time for us to make an informed decision on what we need to be working on versus just randomly saying, well, we didn't do this one, so let's work on that. Because there may be some of these that we need to continue to focus on, given where we are with the data that we'll get from our own assessments internally.
Okay, item 2.0, thank you so much. Item 2.07, enrollment and marketing update.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Lang. Natalie Allen, I'll bring you up, and I know that there'll be a couple of other individuals who will work with you, but we wanted to give you all an update. We've been very fortunate to work in a very collaborative way with, even with some of our board members around this because we know that the lifeline of the school district is students, and we need to make sure that we are a district that can offer a consistent product that will allow for people to want to keep their kids in the school district while focusing our efforts on recruiting others who may have a different perception of where the district is now based on historical experiences. So we want to share with you all where we are in that area and the work that we've done at this time.
So good evening, Board Chair Robinson, board members, and Dr. Bedell. I'm very excited to present to you this evening. As we know, our recruitment and marketing campaign was an all-in, all-hands-on-deck initiative this year. We had also a lot more financial support than we've had in the past, so thank you for that. This is really a team effort, involves communications, our enrollment department, research and accountability, school leadership and principals as well. So we really put a lot of work into this, and everyone was at the table, which is great. In preliminary numbers, we're seeing that this school year, we are beginning to see stabilized enrollment, and that was one of our main goals for the 2018-19 school year. So our additional goals were to develop key insights into our district households, identify opportunities to improve our marketing, advertising, and recruitment for next year, create enrollment planning calendar templates, and to really establish baselines for future goal development. So our process for prioritizing our enrollment efforts included signature schools, where we focused on promoting individual signature schools with an application date around the same time as local charters. We had a pre-K push that coincided with the timing for kindergarten enrollment. Kindergarten-bound kids got recruiting pieces at home and online to their homes through the radio and those kinds of things, and that coincided with area charter school kindergarten enrollment and recruitment as well. We had our middle school-bound and high school-bound pieces that went out, and then the remaining neighborhood push happened toward the end of our focus cycle. Our unique opportunities this year were targeted ECA, or Early College Academy, marketing, where we marketed directly to 10th-grade students and area prospects moving into that 11th grade year. And then, of course, the Banneker Charter closure was an opportunity for us where we focused a marketing effort in welcoming those families to KCPS. So as far as strategy's concerned, we reviewed the marketing efforts and results from 2016-17. We worked with principals to determine effective communication vehicles with their parents, talked with parents about how they best learn about our schools and our activities, and then individualized plans based on our schools, as well as the students and families they serve. So rather than having that KCPS signature school enrollment push, we made sure to individualize and target each school and each family. Through this process, we got a lot of information and determined that there was not one magic bullet to reach families in the district. We know that it was really important that we reached out through a variety of mechanisms. And another thing that we learned, which we were able to improve on in our messaging, was that very few people understood what a signature school was. So using the term theme school or magnet school was much more effective, and sharing the unique opportunities at each school was much more effective when we were targeting So we used a variety of marketing and promotional pieces to meet potential families where they live physically. That was, and then, of course, where they live online and socially throughout the city. So that included websites, print advertising, radio advertising, billboards, social media, and then earned advertising through news media outlets. Sorry, having clicker issues up here. So we had direct mail campaigns, email campaigns, and then, of course, individual community engagement. We had city school fairs, open house tours. We had our kindergarten roundup initiative, neighborhood church handouts and posters. Our yard signs were really big with the schools. A lot of parents really wanted to, you know, show their pride and put their students' yard sign in their yards. We see them all over the area, which is really exciting, showing pride in KCPS schools. And then we also met with realtors to talk about our schools and talk up the great things that were happening in KCPS. So some of the things that we learned as a department was that, and you can look at this graph here, that a lot of our folks were hearing from parent referrals, which we kind of guessed already, but that is something that was confirmed for us through our campaign. We had a lot of folks hear about us through the radio, social media, and then those direct mailers home. In 2016, our first week enrollment numbers were 135, and then this year, that number of applications went up to 946 because of these efforts. So that's something to really be excited about, and we definitely are. And to date, our total number of applications is 8,072, and the total number of students who applied are 3596, which means that our students took the opportunity then to apply to multiple schools because of the ease of the online program. So the second highest reason why parents chose a signature school was that other column, but we were able to break that other column out. We saw that folks were hearing about us on Google, through the neighborhood, and actually through school referrals and just because of alumni. So if their siblings went to a school and had a good experience, then parents would go to that school again. And now I'm going to introduce Allison Kosover, who is our wonderful marketing data consultant, and she's going to talk about some of the predictors to stay and leave KCPS, which is something that we're using in order to really target our efforts.
So I'm Allison Kosover, and me and my team, we work with your teams to uncover opportunities about your students and families and really all of the constituents in the district area to understand and significantly improve return on investment for your marketing, your advertising, and your recruitment efforts. So we are, like to think of ourselves as data-driven experts, and so we use data and information to help make success-oriented efforts for the district. And we come to the district, just quickly, we come to the district with experience doing this for both profit-based as well as nonprofit organizations, a wide variety of industries, and we've successfully done that for all of them. Many of them, of course, have very varied goals, and so that's what we do, and that's why we're here. As we prepared our direct marketing plans, we analyzed and profiled the students and households, both current to the district and also historical, to try and figure out what the puts and takes and differences are between the households. We learned a few things. We learned that there's some predictors of households to stay in the district and that there are some predictors of households to leave. So I'm going to go through those, and one of the predictors to stay is Spanish-speaking households. So at a rate of 1.6 to 1, Spanish-speaking households are significantly more likely to stay with us. And when we look at the households that are in district that have school-aged children that don't have anybody enrolled with the district themselves, and we look at that Spanish indicator, whether they speak Spanish in the household, it's really low percent, at like just 3%. So that's good to know. Other predictors to stay are households with multiple, with students in multiple KCPS schools, but also just simply households with multiple students. Households with multiple surnames are likely to stay, and students in 11th grade with us tend to finish out their educational school years. But we also learned some things about what's predicting a household to leave KCPS. So in contrast to the Spanish-speaking households, English-speaking households, which is a large chunk of our population, they're more likely to leave us. Households with students in only one school, also more likely to leave us. Households with only one student, also more likely to leave us. And households with one family surname or last name, also more likely to leave us. So some of the students that, if we're going to do a campaign around keeping our students, we may want to take into consideration. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mike.
Thank you, Allison. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board of Directors. So we've seen some, whoa. I don't even know what to do right there, guys. I'm not even touching anything. I apologize.
So this is being livestreamed, too, just for the record.
So if everyone would turn to their results page.
Dr. Bedell, Board of Directors. You've heard a lot of the efforts that we put into the marketing campaign, the recruitment campaign, and the data-driven analysis that goes behind all of our efforts. So the ultimate question is, did it work? What happened? So the focus was on signature schools for this year. The projection column is a five-year cohort survival rate that we use for staffing purposes to determine how big we think our schools are going to be next year. Very proud to say that right now, these are our six signature schools. Only one is below 100% of projection, and everybody else has busted the 100% line. We are very proud of this. This is the first time that we've been recording data that this has occurred. So if we are looking at data to determine if this is effective, the short answer is yes. We are, this is an effective campaign so far. What we're doing is showing results. We definitely realize that there is room for growth, but we are very much pleased with these results so far. What we see in front of you today is a graph by grade of students who have attended on the first day of school. So I will note to you that three grade levels are down, second, fifth, and ninth grade, but on the first day of school, we had close to 500 students report to KCPS schools more than the previous school year. And year-to-date, on the eighth day of school, we are up close to 150 students from the previous school year. We feel very strongly about these numbers, and we are currently, as a system, at about 96 to 97% of our projected totals. We feel very strongly about these, and these are strong indicators about the health of the system, the work that's been going on in the system, and the leadership of the system.
So, we'll talk a little bit now about how did we get here. As we started or began to execute our targeted marketing efforts, we used information to make really great decisions. We looked at the makeup of each household and the message we wanted to deliver, and we married the two to ensure success. But what we learned pretty quickly is that our households are really dynamic and pretty complicated. So, you can have households with multiple students, where the students in the household go to different schools, but they're in the same grade, or they go to the same school, they're in the same grade, or they go to the same school in different grades, you know, all of those different ways that households can be made up with students, that multiple students. If you look at the schools, we also learned some interesting things about students that live in households and go to different schools. Some households have students that go to different neighborhood schools for a variety of reasons. Some households have students that go to different signature schools, and in some households, you have students that go to a neighborhood school and students that go to a signature school. So, trying to figure out when we deliver messages related to the school, or an event, or whatever action we want them to take, that we are making the right decision for the household, for the students within the household, so we deliver the message appropriately. And thinking about delivering the message appropriately, speaking to them in the right language is something that we identified as well. So, as we talked about our Spanish-speaking households and how significant they are for us, we learned that sometimes we should deliver the piece in Spanish and sometimes in English, and in some cases, we've got schools that have a pretty high percentage of both, Spanish-speaking households and English-speaking households, and in those cases, we delivered a bilingual piece to both households, to all households, so that we got the message across, and they could read it, and it was an effective media for them. We also looked at how best to target the household in the address, so the name. You've got households where you've got multiple surnames for the students, but you've also got a different surname for the guardian, and how best to do that. So, we didn't want to cause any confusion, and we wanted to make the right decision. Sometimes, we target the student, sometimes, we target the household, and sometimes, we call it the KCPS family. The other thing that we were looking at as far as effectiveness is our deliverability of our pieces, and we learned pretty early on that our households that live in apartment complexes or multifamily dwelling units, they're, you know, they have mobility and they move around. They move between apartment complexes, they move within a complex to different units, and we were finding that some of our pieces weren't getting delivered. And with that, we made some conscious decisions to take out the surname and do it to a KCPS family to ensure that those households weren't left out. As we think about moving forward with our targeting, we'll continue to be precise and look at better ways to target. One of the things that we'll do is we'll look at how we're spending our money and ensuring that we're using it most effectively, and understanding the school and grade capacity will help us do that. So, we'll be looking at using some of that information as we move forward. So, what's next in analytics? For school year 2018-19, we'll periodically evaluate the student enrollment base for who stays, who leaves, and who joins us after the first of the year. All of those cohort groups are important to us, right? We'll probably do some reporting at the gross level, so we have a district-wide kind of understanding of what's happening, but we'll also look at the net student or net household level and analyze those cohort groups for any insights to apply to future targeted efforts. And then, as students, households leave the district, we'll add them to our recruitment database as appropriate, and we'll work to get them back, which is something that we look forward to. One of the tools that we use to report and do analytics is dashboards. And our goal with dashboards is to gain consistent views of key metrics and share them across all the departments and organizational levels within KCPS to drive decisions and provide insight. Mike and I are working on this together, you know, it's a team effort between all of us. But one of the very first dashboards that's coming up is a dashboard for the first three weeks of school, and its enrollment count. So, by day, by school, by, by day, by school, by grade, this year versus last year, we'll provide a dashboard that compares those two things. We also have teed up an enrollment watch report or an alert system. This should also be at the school level, and it'll be tracking enrollment. So, where enrollment is higher than normal for school, we'll have visibility into that and some understanding, and we'll bring together the right parties to have a conversation about any actions that need to be taken. And on the converse, if there's a school that's below what they're, where they should be, below the normal, this alert or process will help us dial up recruitment and potentially marketing efforts to see if we can correct that situation.
Allison is correct. We're doing a lot of this stuff by hand right now. We're working very diligently to get all this stuff automated, to free us up for other endeavors and to utilize our manpower in other areas, but this is critically important to us, and this is a priority for the next school year to develop these dashboards in conjunction with marketing, but also for other purposes. So, with that in mind, what are we doing next? What's next in overall recruitment efforts, guys? We have a plan to hire two part-time recruiting efforts who will be housed under the auspices of Garrett Webster, our enrollment director. We will be starting to develop our 2019-2020 strategy. We already have monthly meetings scheduled, rolling out signature school enrollment on or before December 3rd, and rolling out neighborhood and pre-K enrollment on February 1st. It is one of our concerted efforts to streamline and to really make it much more user-friendly, our online enrollment system. We do view that that is a sincere benefit to our community, and we think that it has had a very positive impact on our overall enrollment numbers and the ease of the community to access our enrollment system.
Okay, I do want to remind my colleagues, although we're going to go in a Q&amp;A session, we are at the end of our time for the entire meeting, and we have four more business items, so we can continue to engage in questions. I don't want to silence anyone, but we can also submit questions via email. So, any questions regarding this report? Yes, a board member may answer.
Thank you. This is really helpful. In the, all the various analyses, you've identified predictors to stay, you've identified predictors to leave. Within the predictors to leave, do we understand, are there any triggering events? Are there anything that you've been able to surface through the research or study that indicates what would, what is most likely to trigger that departure? I mean, I know these are general sort of, I don't know what, how you would describe these, but these are kind of status descriptions of individuals, but I'm wondering, are there, are there things or conditions that can cause, trigger a departure?
It really varies. We call our folks as soon as we know that they've left, and a lot of times, when we do get an answer on the other end, it's varying reasons. A lot of times, it is because they're moving. It might be because of a negative experience, and then, in which case, we ask them to come back and try again and those kinds of things. But really, I mean, I think moving is probably one of the biggest ones, but it just really depends on the family and what's going on at the school level, so it's pretty varied.
Follow-up, if I can. To what extent do you test some of your ideas and thinking and the communications with some of our parent leaders? You know, we have a lot of parent leaders at all of our different schools and who are, you know, sort of determined stakeholders. Do we ever run past the ideas with them, or do you anticipate doing something like that?
We do, and we're doing that even more so this year with the chartering of the project team that Jesse actually spoke to and the strategic plan update. We're bringing a lot more things to our Spanish-speaking families, working with the ELL department to figure out how to make it easier for those families in particular. And then, of course, with the revitalization of DAC, we're really trying to work with them throughout this year to collaborate even more so about how we reach our families.
Yes, board member Wolfsey.
Promise I will make it quick. I want to commend you. I know I have seen this district prior to being on the board spend a lot of time and effort on what I would consider general or mass type of approaches to marketing and communications and then enrollment. This is different. As we all know, we have very limited dollars, and so, spending them where we get the biggest bang for our buck, where they are targeted, where we need them most, I think is very important, and I'm pleased to see that this approach seems to have had the effect that we were looking for. I will save all my other questions, because they, I could go on for days here, but I just want to commend the team, because it wasn't just communications, it was everybody. I know we're, that's the other thing, Dr. Bedell, to see people working outside of silos and to see what can be done when we get out of these silos is really exciting.
Thank you for your presentation. Also, want to thank the board members who had an opportunity to meet in advance and have conversations and to pull this presentation together. Now, for our business side of our agenda, we do have our policy governance 3.01. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual updating of or adoption of policies to board policy, Appendix D, which actually impacts board policy and compliance, BBFA. We're just asking the board to take action on this today.
Are there any questions about the policy? It would now be in order to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the adoption of updating policies to board policy, Appendix D, policy compliance, and policy BBFA. Is there any debate on the motion? Will the secretary call the roll?
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Mr. Evans?
Ms. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. The majority in favor, and the agreement is approved. The policy is approved. Item 4.01, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a renewal of our contract with Sherwood Center, who provides outsourcing for students that are in our special needs population, and we are asking the board to take action on that contract of $1,036,432.
Are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded to adopt the proposed amendment with Sherwood Center. Is there any debate? Seeing none, will the secretary call the roll?
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Mr. Evans?
Ms. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. There's a majority in favor, and the agreement with Sherwood Center is adopted. Item 4.02, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're asking the board to take action on Cornerstones of Care, another outsourcing facility to provide service for students that reside within our special needs population. Contract is valued at $1,125,000.
Are there any questions? Seeing no question, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the Cornerstones of Care agreement. Is it an amendment or agreement? The Cornerstones of Care agreement, is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, will the secretary call the roll?
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Mr. Evans?
Mrs. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. There's a majority in favor, and the Cornerstones of Care agreement is approved. Item 4.03, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have Ms. Quinley to come up, but what we are asking the board to do is to approve the actions of the Lincoln Middle Construction Contracts, valued at $3,071,271. This is part of the work that we're doing around providing more opportunities for our MBE, our Minority Business Enterprise, and our Women Business Enterprise vendors to have an opportunity to conduct business with the school district, so we wanted to provide an update to the community as to where we are with meeting those goals.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. This is round two of the efforts in place in partnership with our construction management company, McAllen Gordon, and you can see, we have 32 contracts for you to add to that large number that we brought you last month, totaling just over $3 million, as Dr. Bedell noted. In this particular bundle, 11.12% are to minority business enterprises and 23.21% to women-owned business enterprises. So, project to date at over $12 million in contracts, 24% of those contracts are to minority business enterprise and 11% to women-owned business. So, we're at 35% collectively, with a target range by board policy of 25.
All right, wonderful. Are there any questions regarding this? How many rounds are we going to go through?
Two more.
Two more rounds?
Mm-hmm.
We're going to be looking this good about the round two?
Yes.
Mr. Contreras is saying yes.
Okay, all right. I might just pull out that kiss, for sure. All right, we'll see. Okay, is there any, is any more questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion? Okay, seeing no debate, the secretary will call the roll, and the question again is the Lincoln Middle School Construction Contracts.
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Mr. Evans?
Mrs. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the contract with Lincoln Middle School Contracts are approved. All right. Item 4.04, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is asking the board to take action on the Contract Addendum for Lincoln Prep Academy HVAC Replacement in the amount of $1,052,693.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the contract amended for CO for Lincoln Prep Academy HVAC Replacement. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, will the secretary call the roll?
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Mr. Evans?
Mrs. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the contract with the Contract Addendum CO for Lincoln Prep Academy HVAC Replacement is approved. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the items on the consent agenda. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manzer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero?
Mr. Evans?
Mrs. Morris?
Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Dr. Bedell, you have a announcement?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share this with the, for the board's consumption in the communities also. Well, on the Kelly Services Amendment, we were able, and I want to commend our Human Resource Department and anybody that worked with them to negotiate an adjustment in that contract, because we were not competitive with other school districts in the amount that we were paying substitute teachers. We also realized that the budget line that we had established for substitute teachers, we did have some room to negotiate with Kelly Services, and so, what we ended up doing was to get, we were able to work with Kelly Services to get them to allow for us to pay at a higher rate. So, now, we're more competitive. It didn't cost us an additional penny, and now, we're going to be more competitive with being able to place substitutes in our classes as a result of the work. So, I just want to say good eye on catching that and making that happen, and I want to give you kudos publicly for that.
Thank you. This brings us to the conclusion of the agenda. There's no objection. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.